Good evening. We'd like to start the meeting, regular board meeting of the Board of Education, this Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Approval of the revised agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have presentation of the high school yearbooks to the Board of Education.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Maritza, and I am honored to serve you as the senior editor of our yearbook team. I am here to share with you the vision and inspiration behind our Galaxy and Time-themed yearbook. This year, we wanted to create something extraordinary, something that reflects the boundless potential and the unique journey of each student. The theme of Galaxy and Time encapsulates the vastness of our experiences and the endless possibilities that lie ahead. Just as the universe is ever-expanding, so are our dreams and aspirations. We chose this theme to remind ourselves and our fellow students that, like stars, we shine in our own unique ways. Time, represented in the flow of our pages, shows how we've evolved, learned, and transformed over these pivotal years. This yearbook is not just a collection of memories, but a testament to our resilience and our ability to dream beyond the horizon. We hope that when our classmates look back at this book, they will see more than just photographs and captions. They will see a map of their journey, a reminder that they are part of something greater, and that their potential is as limitless as the cosmos. We've worked super hard as the club to create something great. I can't wait to see what's next in the Shields' future. Thank you for supporting our vision and helping us create timeless keepsakes that will inspire and remind us of the incredible journey that we have all shared. I want to thank all of the faculty, students, and administrators of the school that has supported me and all of us throughout our journey.
Want to thank you for the yearbooks. They look absolutely fantastic. A lot of work went into them. Next up, we have commendations to start with Dr. Eric Hassler.
Good evening, everyone. In October of 2022, over 1.3 million U.S. high school students took the PSAT, which entered them into the 2024 competition for the National Merit Scholarship Program recognition and scholarships. Nearly all program participants are now seniors planning to enter college in 2024. The National Merit Scholarship Program uses scores from the PSAT to determine approximately 50,000 high-scoring participants who qualify for program recognition, about the top 4%. Approximately 34,000 of those 50,000 are identified as commended students, and we recognized four Monroe Woodbury seniors who were commended in the fall of 2023. However, out of that 1.3 million students that initially took the PSAT, it's further trimmed down to a group of 15,000 finalists, which is then trimmed down further to the winners' group, which represents less than 1% of high school seniors, or approximately 2,500 out of the original 1.3 million. Monroe Woodbury was once again fortunate to have a student scoring in the top less-than fraction of a percent of all students that took the PSAT to become a National Merit Scholarship winner. Congratulations to Anushree Burgaheen. And up next to introduce our valedictorian and salutatorian, Dr. Elisa Soto, the principal from the high school.
Oh, good evening, everyone. It is my great pleasure. I am so proud of these two young women. They exemplify what a crusader is. They are leaders of our district. They're kind people. Their message is of hope, in that treat people with respect, treat people with kindness, give back to your community. And again, I am so proud of their accomplishments. It is my pleasure to introduce our valedictorian, Ms. Julia Landris. The same goes for, again, it's just such an honor, to introduce our salutatorian, Ms. Daya Mangat. Thank you. I'm so very proud of your accomplishments, and I cannot wait to see what the future holds for the both of you.
Okay, next up, we have 2024 Special Olympics presenter, Dr. Dan Styler.
Change of plans, sorry. Change of plans. I'm Mrs. Escobar, one of the coaches. Good evening, Board of Education, Mrs. Rodriguez and Administration. On behalf of all the elementary coaches, I would like to congratulate our 14 athletes on displaying excellent sportsmanship, dedication, and perseverance throughout this season. They attended monthly practices, where they worked on improving their skill level at soccer and basketball. They competed Saturday, April 13th, at Park Elementary in Middletown. Overall, as a team, they earned two gold medals, two silver medals, five bronze medals, and 11 ribbons. We are so very proud of these fabulous athletes. Coach Decerchio, Coach Myers, Coach Styler, and I are honored to be their coaches. So without further ado, I would like to announce the names of the 14 extraordinary elementary Special Olympians that competed in the Monroe Woodbury Special Olympics this 2023-2024 school year. First, we have Jackson Rambo! Jason Candelario! Leilani Liverpool! Good job, Leilani. London Liverpool! Say, "Thank you." Kayden Woods! Good job, Kayden. And we have some athletes that could not make it tonight, but I would like to announce their names. Zain Ahmed, Ian Anderson, Jerry Basurdo Castillo, Logan Meehan, Ethan Roy, Emmanuel Sabat, Ahmed Sadiq, Tanvir Singh, and we have one more that just came, William Andren! Great job, athletes. Thank you to everyone that played a role in making this event happen this year. It was a wonderful day. Thank you to all the volunteers that lent a helping hand during practices and on the competition day. A huge shout-out to all the athletes' families for your support during our season. Let's hear it one more time for the Monroe Woodbury Elementary Special Olympic Team!
Next up, we have 2024 Special Olympics middle school students presented by Christine Miranda.
Good evening, good evening. Before I introduce our Olympians, I would like to thank the Board of Education, Superintendent Rodriguez, and our middle school administration, especially Principal Berger, for their unwavering support of our students and our Special Olympic program, and to our athletes' parents for their continued support. A huge thank you to our coaches of our team, Jeanette Santander, Stephanie Van Etten, Mallory Greenberg, Veronica Coloma. Thank you to the students' one-on-one aides and our student volunteers that are involved with making this team a success. Everyone involved encourages and cheers on our athletes. They take measurements, they record the athletes' times, they help keep everything stay organized. This is a huge undertaking, and it is a 100% team effort, and we are honored to be a part of these children's lives. Thank you so much. Please stand and be recognized. Our team practiced for 15 weeks, leading up to competition at West Point. They worked hard sharpening their skills, improving their times, cheering each other on, laughing, and most importantly, having a great time. On April 22nd, our mighty team of 10 stellar athletes competed at West Point in six different events. They competed in the 25-meter walk, the 50-meter run, the 100-meter running long, the 100-meter run, the running long jump. Okay. And along with smiles and enormous feelings of pride, the middle school team was awarded with two gold medals, six silver medals, six bronze medals, and 13 ribbons. That feeling of pride and happiness is why we are truly grateful to be a part of this team. Athletes, when I call your name, please come up to the stage. Isabella Pellington. Emma Arjona. Salvatore Attard could not be here tonight. Aiden Baxter. Elijah De Leon. Messiah George. Caleb Roman. And before I announce my last athlete, Nyla Joseph and Max Velez could not be here tonight. But Isabella Zambieri is. Come on up, Isabella. Congratulations, athletes. Faith Hipsman is our Special Olympics coach at the high school, and she sends her regrets. She could not be here tonight, so I have the honor of announcing her team. First and foremost, I would like to thank the parents of their continued support in making our athletes' day so special. I would also like to thank the high school administrators for joining us at West Point and cheering us on, which made that day much more special. Second, I would like to thank the high school coaches, please stand, Antoinette Felice, Erica Laracy, and Colleen Grimes. Also, all 12 teachers' aides and our record keeper, Sharon Lipsky. The Special Olympic team was given a congratulatory breakfast sponsored by The Cozy Cafe. Also, thanks to Mr. Foley for donating the money so we could purchase the hats for their Special Olympics team. I am so proud to announce our middle, nope, Monroe Woodbury High School varsity team. All the athletes worked so hard and have improved so much that at West Point, they are now competing at a higher level. The team has great sportsmanship, stamina, and they help each other as well as cheer on their teammates. As a team of 16 athletes, they won 22 gold medals, 15 silver medals, 10 bronze medals, and various ribbons in the following events: the running long jump, the standing long jump, the turbo softball throw, the 100-meter race, the 50-meter walk, and shot put. The Monroe Woodbury High School varsity athletes are Christopher Adorno, who is a senior. He is a senior this year, so he is helpful and constantly encourages his teammates. We will miss you, and good luck to you. Alexa Alvarado, our Special Olympics captain, helps demonstrating perfect form of each event for teammates, helping out where needed and showing leadership. We will miss you. Maximus Baxardi, another senior who will be returning to help his teammates succeed next year, was unable to make it tonight. Amir Biggs was new to the team this year. He and Angelina Christie were unable to be here tonight. Aaron Cohen, another senior leaving us. I think that's why Coach Hipsman wrote, "We will miss his enthusiasm." His loving practice, cheering his teammates on. You will be missed. Good luck to you. Feudin Crawley. Nicholas Ishak, also new to the team this year, did so well. The next three athletes were not able to make it tonight. Daniel Dutillo, Christiana De Paulis, and Jordy Florian. Margail Legere. Desha Patel. Evan Pavignano, another senior. He has always done his best on the team. He has always done his best on the team, and when needed, he demonstrated perfect form for his teammates. He has always came to practice ready to do his absolute best. You will be missed. We have Brian Payne. Brian Payne. And Logan Whitfield was not able to make it tonight. Congratulations, athletes.
Okay, next up, 2024 Odyssey of the Mind. Deborah Garland to present.
Hi, everyone. I'm delighted to be here and celebrate our creative crusaders. I'd like to thank the present board and all previous boards. This is 45 years of celebrating our creative minds, so thank you so much for all of that. We have two Monroe Woodbury Odyssey teams here tonight who won the regional competition at the Bosse's Complex in Goshen, and they went on to compete at the 45th Annual New York State Odyssey Tournament in Syracuse this past April. Both teams presented themselves proudly. Our school, our community, they really did us proud. And as they impressed the judges with their teamwork, creativity, and perseverance, they scored very well as well. So the first team up tonight placed eighth at States. This Pine Tree team was coached by Nate Peterson, and if I could ask you to just hold your applause until I read the names of the team, and then we can give them one big round. Mae Badler, Noah Austin, Nicholas Campbell, Naomi Ko, Alexei Elisenko, Leith Harady, and Sophia McKenzie. Congratulations, Team Peterson! I'm delighted to say that the other team that we're going to be celebrating tonight is also from Pine Tree. And this team, it's the first time in about 20 years that a team from Pine Tree went to world finals for Odyssey of the Mind. They did this because they placed first at States. We were in Ames, Iowa recently, where we discovered all kinds of other teams from other countries, other states. We ran into some tornadoes. It was a wonderful experience. And the team did very well. They outwitted 50% of the competition. An amazing accomplishment for such a young team. Well done. Again, hold your applause just for a second. This Pine Tree team was coached by Lauren Mandarino and Jackie Imhoff. And they are Harper Burns, Jonathan Dambroso, Kaylee Diaz, Sophia Diaz, Angelina Felix, Ion Galani, and Isabella Gonzales. and Isabella Gonzalez. Again, thank you very much for having us.
Next up, we have the 2024 NISMA majors results and the NISMA students' Level 4A+ ratings by Christopher Toborski.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Toborski. I'm the district music coordinator. I want to thank the Board of Education and the Cabinet for inviting me to tonight's very special meeting and for helping me to recognize so many of our outstanding students and teachers on their achievements at NISMA festivals this year. Let's begin by recognizing the performing ensembles that performed at the New York State School Music Association Major Organization Festival. Major Organization is one of the most important and high-stakes events of the school year for our music department. Teachers prepare their ensemble to the highest level on three NISMA-approved musical selections. Two New York State certified adjudicators evaluate every aspect of the performance, from professionalism and poise to musical phrasing and intonation. So, if you are present, I'd like to call up the teachers of those ensembles up to the stage. We'll start with the Middle School Concert Band, co-directed by Mr. Adam Conforti and Ryan Walther, Level 2 Gold. The Middle School Chamber Chorus, directed by Mr. Brian Clark, Level 3 Gold. The Middle School Symphony Orchestra, directed by Mr. Peter Giorgio, Level 3 Gold. Middle School Symphonic Band, directed by Chris Toborski, Level 3 Gold with distinction. Middle School Wind Ensemble, directed by Mr. Ryan Walther, who is already up there, Level 4 Gold with distinction. And he couldn't be here tonight, but Mr. Richard Reagan, High School Wind Ensemble, Level 6 Gold with distinction. Congratulations to these teachers and their ensembles. Okay, I'm not quite done yet. Congratulations to those teachers. And now, on to some of our amazing students. The NISMA Solo Festival is perhaps the most important event for the individual musician. Students spend months preparing a solo as well as mastering a series of scales, rudiments, arpeggios, sight-reading. NISMA solos range in difficulty from Level 1 or elementary through Level 6 Professional. I am thrilled to announce the Monroe Woodbury students who performed on a Level 6 and scored an A+,, which is 97 points out of 100 or higher. Please help me welcome to the stage the following students who I will call up alphabetically: Matthew Belenich, Violin. William Callahan, String Bass. Valerie Campbell, Voice. Getting four perfect scores on four separate performances: Chase Cassidy, Alto Saxophone, Tenor Saxophone, Jazz Alto Saxophone, and Jazz Tenor Saxophone. Jacob Ciriello, on Voice. Malad Etasami, Violin. Scoring an A+ on two solos, both Voice and Jazz Voice, Joshua Gorlin. Gregory Grissar, Voice. Julia Quinto, Voice. Gerard Haber, Cello. Scoring two Level 6 A+ on both flute and piccolo, Unbi Gian. Crystal Jimenez. Luca Jonsic. Mica Joseph. Kyle Kawada. Michaela Kim, Violin. Riley Conwar, on Voice. Julia Landris, on Horn. Scoring a Level 6 A+ on two solos, both Voice and Jazz Voice, Tyler Landuski. Kangun Lee, Flute. Andrew Liang, String Bass. River Luz, Snare Drum. Ian Mayer, Clarinet. Max Mayer, Viola. Claire Morris, Clarinet. Ava Mueller, Violin. Lauren Mueller, Violin. Scoring two Level 6 A+ on Snare Drum and Mallets, Mr. William Nickel. Another two, from Ms. Sophia Niederberger, Violin and Voice. And last, but certainly not least, on Voice, Nicole Otavio. Congratulations to all of these wonderful students on their fantastic achievement. There certainly are a lot of them. Daniel Solano.
Voice.
Voice.
Yeah. Well, you could go from here. I just...
There we go. Thank you. Leah Pizzello. Gillian Portnoy. Gabriel Ramos. Prasad Saha. Daniel Solano. Sunny Stein. Yuji Sung. Caitlin Thau. Scoring a Level 6 A+ on both Euphonium and Piano, Adam Yashjin. And Daniel Zivan. I think we got everybody. Thank you. Now, these amazing students make us so proud in the music program. What I'd like to present to Ms. Rodriguez is, for the 13th year in a row, Monroe Woodbury has been named by the NAMM Foundation a Best Community for Music Education. So, congratulations to the community, all the supporters, the Board of Education, our wonderful teachers and students. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good job.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dawn Russell, and I am the Director of Transportation for the Monroe Woodbury School District. And assisting me tonight is my Assistant Director, Jessie Lazar. So, this year's School Bus Safety Poster Contest theme is Driving Safely Into the Future. And our students really use their imaginations to demonstrate this futuristic vision. Our School Bus Safety Poster Contest could never be as successful as it is without the cooperation of so many people. This includes not only our very talented students, but also administrators, teachers, our secretaries, and our trainers who visit each school to judge the posters that are proudly decorated in the hallways of each school. As a matter of fact, this year, on the last snow day of the year, our trainers were going around the district to each school, collecting the posters so we would meet the deadlines. So, we will now begin by announcing our poster contest winners in alphabetical order. Amani Adan. Aria Afzal. Zachary Chase. Jocelyn Chen. Sean Feigertbutz. Gabriel Gambino. Isabella Getthman. Gabriel. Gabriel. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize if I mispronounce your name. It's so important to me not to do that. So, did we call Eva Gonzalez? Eva Gonzalez. Natalie Gonzalez Arazo. Ibrar Hassan. Elizabeth Hernandez Duque. Abigail Hernandez Medina. Natalie Hernandez Mejia. Addison Hill. Shinbi Gian. So, there's something about Shinbi's poster that I'd like to tell you about. So, Shinbi's poster went to the regionals, where it came in first place. And then, after that, it went to Albany, where it was judged by the New York State Association for Pupil Transportation, and where it won first place. And Shinbi's poster is now going to be judged at the national level. Artith Joy. Sarah Koops. Emma Lang. Aysen Lozano. Heaven Ma. Zima Malik. And then, we have Angelina McCormick. So, Angelina's poster won first place at the regional judging. And then, her poster went on to Albany, where it was judged, and she placed third place. So, congratulations. Then, we have Kayla McKessi. Michelle Macedoya. Ormani Molina. Ormani's poster also won first place in the regionals. And then, his poster went on to Albany, where it was judged and placed second place in the States. Joshua Moya Hernandez. Rita Neesum. Anna Stephanie Nolasco. Kennedy Novellino. Renesme Ochoa. Andy Pierce. Adeline Peria. Brielle Puntiel de Leon. Nolasco? Yep, I think I did. So, we have Anna Stephanie Nolasco. She just wasn't sure if she heard her name. Congratulations. We did Brielle. Gabrielle Quorino. Valerie Ramirez Gomez. Ariana Regolato. Jaden Rivera. Elaine Robertson. Leanna Sanchez. Alani? Okay, so we say her name, Alani. And then, we called Leanna Sanchez. Leanna Sanchez. All right? Endra Sanchez Sanchez. Joseph Schatz. Claire Schneider. Abril Serrano. Scarlett Shim. Good job. Charles Smith. Charles Smith. Anthony Anthony Stazo. Ava Verna. Then we have Grace Villa Fuerte Guaman. Okay, we're getting to the end. Olivia Yang. Rosita Young. Irina Zhang. If there is anyone that I missed by accident, please come up. I don't want anybody to... Okay. So thank you again to everyone who made this year's School Bus Safety Poster Contest such a huge success. Thank you again, and thank you for coming out.
Oh my goodness, yes. How are you? Oh my goodness, congratulations.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Next up is our recognition of the New York State Seal of Bilinguality. The New York State Seal of Bilinguality recognizes high school graduates who have attained a high level of proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing in one or more languages in addition to English. The SEAL acknowledges the importance of being bilingual in today's global society. It highlights the hard work and achievement of students and encourages students to pursue language study while in school. The recognition of attaining bilinguality becomes part of the high school transcript and diploma for these students, and is a statement of accomplishment for future employers and for college admission. We are proud to have 42 graduates achieve the Seal of Bilinguality in one world language, and two graduates achieving the Seal of Bilinguality in two world languages. They demonstrated proficiency in Spanish, French, and Italian, which are offered here in the high school, as well as Romanian. Each student will receive a certificate, as well as a medallion, from the New York State Education Department that will be able to be worn at graduation. Please come up the following students. And recognize Alexandra Alberto Batista. Harriet Alvarez. Leslie Bazan. Isabella Benkumsmi. Emma Brownagel. How did I do? Did I do okay? Anushri Burgahine. Dana Candelario Hernandez. Ivan Castro Zalea. Daniel Christie. Erin Coyle. Yasenia Cruz. Katan Deola. Nathaniel Diaz. Ashley Diaz Ramos. Ramatuli Dief. Jamie Eberhart. Cooper Edwards. George Garan. Allison... Yes? Allison Hernandez Medina. Kelly Emhoff. Alexia Joseph. Ariel Koifman. Laika Ledger. Kristy Lopez. Caitlin Mallory. Daya Mangot. Leila Margillo. Sophia Marseille. Sandy Mendez. Ava Montevergen. Clarissa Pagoda. Jocelyn Penya. Brooke Reese. Rebecca Romero. Rachel Rucker. Sophia Ruiz. Casey Solis Figueroa. Glenn Su. Maya Telismanek. Nelly Valdez. Natalia Vargas Belliard. Lindsay Winters. And I have not forgotten the two students that received the Seal of Bilinguality in two languages, in Italian and Spanish, Alicia Diaz. And in French and Romanian, Matias Stoica. One each. About another round of applause for all of our Seal of Bilinguality winners. Congratulations. Next up is our Seal of Civic Readiness. New York State also began offering a Seal of Civic Readiness in 2021, 2022 for school districts recognizing students that possess a high level of proficiency in civic knowledge and have demonstrated civic participation. Monroe Woodbury applied to state ed to offer the Seal of Civic Readiness, and it was approved last year. And we were fortunate to have 19 graduating seniors achieve the seal last year. I am proud to announce that we have 28 seniors this year who have achieved the Seal of Civic Readiness. The recognition of attaining the Seal of Civic Readiness also becomes part of the high school transcript and diploma. To demonstrate proficiency in civic knowledge, recipients must showcase high achievement in their social studies courses and assessments. And to demonstrate civic participation, students must complete a combination of projects, take courses that promote civic engagement, or participate in extracurricular activities that promote civic participation. Each of our Seal of Civic Readiness recipients will receive a certificate, as well as recognition in our graduation program in two weeks. Please come up the following students to be recognized. Nicholas Alapat. Nina Biscotti. Anushri Burgahine. Alexandra Butkovich. Jaden Deola. Alicia Diaz. Shria Girish. Amaya Grant. Anthony Grierro. Joseph Grierro. Maritza Irazari. Kashaf Joffrey. Alexia Joseph. Ariel Koifman. Haley Lenari. Julia Landris. Laika Ledger. Sharika Linton. Kristy Lopez. Michael Martinez. Julian Myers. Antu Nigewin. Clarissa Pagoda. Lola Sale. Dia Sethi. Katherine Sikorsky. Isabel Vargis. Sean Williamson. I tried hard with names, so I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. One more. Congratulations for our Seal of Civic Readiness winners. Congratulations, everyone. Way to go. Next up, we have the Recognition of Artwork and Art Purchase by the Board of Education for award recipients. Our first recipient is Emma... Now, I might say your name wrong. Brungal?
Brownagel.
Her art is titled Behind the Mask: Miss Mixed Media. The next person we have is Rebecca Hayes, To Be a Woman in Acrylic. And next up, we have Brian Sanchez, The White Figure Digital Illustration. Okay, next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Howie Harrison for recognition of athletic achievements.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. The athletic year overall was a huge success. The student athletes worked extremely hard and were committed to being the best student athletes they can be. I really want to thank the coaches, parents, community members, administration, central office, and the Board of Education for the support you provide to the athletic department and our student athletes. Through all of this support, Monroe Woodbury continues to be one of the best athletic programs in the state, as well as the country. Here are some of our athletic accomplishments for the program this year. We were awarded nine division championships, 11 Section IX championships, one league championships, and one regional championships. We had championships in the following sports. Girls cross-country, OCIA Division Champions, Section IX Class A Champions; Boys cross-country, OCIA Division Champions, OCIA League Champions, and Section IX Class A Champions; Boy soccer, OCIA Division Champions; Girl soccer, OCIA Division Champions, Section IX Champions, and Regional Champions; Girls tennis, OCIA Doubles Champions, Section IX Doubles Champions; Boys bowling was a Section IX state qualifier; Winter chair were the Section IX Champions; Indoor boys track and field, OCIA Division One Champions and Section IX Class A Champions; Indoor girls track and field were the Divisional Champions; Outdoor boys track and field, OCIA Division One Champions, as well as Section IX Champions; Outdoor girls track and field were the Section IX Champions; Our boys lacrosse team were the Section IX Champions; Boys tennis was OCIA Division One Champions, Section IX Champions as well; Girls golf, OCIA Division One Champions; And our flag football team were the Section IX Champions. Thank you. I would like to acknowledge the OCIA Senior Scholar Athletes this year. Julia Landris. And Ariel Koifman. We were also awarded the OCIA We were also awarded the OCIA Scholar Athlete Team of Excellence. We also have over 39 athletes continuing on to college to pursue their education as well as compete athletically. One award I'm extremely proud of, the accomplishments from this year, is we were awarded the OCIA Community Service Challenge Award winners. The trophy's back home, Miss Hop. This award is a true testament to our athletes and coaches who are giving back to the community, and it was just a great deed and dedication, and that's something we're super proud of. And I just want to say thank you for your support, and please have a good night.
Every year, the Mid-Hudson School Study Council presents an award for excellence in school board service. This year's recipient is Suzanne Donahue. Suzanne has been an integral part of our district's board for the past 10 years. Throughout her tenure, she has exhibited unwavering commitment, leadership, and a profound passion for advancing our district's mission. Her unique blend of experience as well as her inclusive approach to decision-making and a genuine interest in hearing diverse perspectives have led to well-informed and impactful outcomes. Suzanne's extensive experience as an educator has been invaluable in helping us navigate complex challenges. Beyond her professional expertise, Suzanne's personal qualities make her an outstanding board member and a community leader. She is approachable, empathetic, and always willing to lend a helping hand. Her genuine care for the welfare of others shines through in every interaction she has with colleagues and community members. Congratulations, Suzanne Donahue. And this is yours, too. Oh, let's take a picture.
Absolutely.
We are going to take a 10-minute break. There is going to be coffee and cookies and water in the cafeteria, so please take a 10-minute break, and thank you all for staying till the end. Thank you. And then come back in 10 minutes.
Okay, we're back. No board business was discussed during the break. Next up on the agenda, we have questions and comments from interested citizens. First up, we have Frank Sambets, Orange County Board of Elections, and it's regarding using Central Valley as a poll site.
Good evening to the board. Superintendent Rodriguez, thank you for allowing us to come tonight and present to the board. I'll start by saying I just retired last June from my 15 years on the Chester School Board, so I salute all of you on your hard work and congratulations on your award. So my name is Frank Sambets. I'm the manager and coordinator of Orange County Poll Sites, ADA Compliance, Election Programming, and Logistics. That's a big, long title to say that we make sure every polling place in Orange County gets served in every town. So we're here tonight. The board got a letter from our commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Commissioners Courtney Canfield-Green and Commissioner Louise Vandemark to present. We're all out over the county tonight presenting to different municipalities, and I believe you all got the letter that we sent out this week, or last week. And in essence, the Board of Elections would like to designate Central Valley Elementary School, 45 Route 32 in Central Valley, as a polling site for the 2024 general election. We would plan to continue to use this facility as a designated site going forward, and this location, as you know, for your school elections, would be an ideal polling place for the voters for the town of Woodbury, where we have our biggest issue right now. Recently, St. Patrick's Church notified us that, as we all know, they are closing combined archdiocese's of New York, and that puts a giant hardship on the county to find another suitable location for the voters of the town of Woodbury, which consists of about 9,000 voters for the school district. The town and village have very limited options going forward. I did a huge site survey over the last 12 months in the town of Woodbury, trying to locate a really significant, you know, an appropriate location that we could hold an election, and most of the sites there are not conducive, mainly ADA compliant and being able to get people in and out of a building, which is why we're in front of you. You know, obviously, the schools, all our school buildings and public buildings, ADA compliant. And, you know, as a board, we wholeheartedly understand the safety concerns. As a school board president, I dealt with it over the last 15 years about parent concerns, community concerns, over these past few years about people coming into the building during school days. Our general elections are usually a non-school day in Orange County, most of our school districts. So for scheduling purposes, you know, the general elections are always the first Tuesday in November, and there is sometimes a primary. This year in Orange County, there's a small primary that is only in one location in each town. That wouldn't affect if we had it next year. That wouldn't affect if we had it next year, the same thing. But they could pop up throughout the year in the June primary election. If that was the case, the board works with all the school districts. As far as, we're in many school districts right now, is a regular polling location during all the elections of the year, not just the school elections. So we would work with each school district because there are times when they can't accommodate that. So really, that's what we're asking, is that we can look at the Central Valley Elementary as a permanent voting site for the town members of Woodbury. And just a couple of numbers that you need to know would probably help is, in 2020, there were 5,000 voters. Who voted from the town of Woodbury turned out to vote? There was three or four locations at that time. And in 2022, there were only 4,000 voters. Even with 10,000 voters in a town, our municipality, you're usually looking, if you got a 10% turnout, that would be a lot unfortunately these days. So you'd probably looking at 5% to 6% of a turnout in an election. So that's how you could look at what those numbers would be throughout a whole town, not just one particular polling site. So if the board any questions, I know it's coming up later on your agenda, I could try to answer any.
We don't take questions at this point.
Okay.
If you want to hang out and we have questions.
Yeah, I will, but I appreciate the time to speak for the board. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Darrell McElroy, who is speaking about MWEA contract and other matters of concern regarding the membership.
Good evening. I am here tonight on behalf of the Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association and Employees Association as president. We have almost made it to the end of the year, and as we saw earlier this evening, there are many things for us to celebrate as a district. I would like to extend congratulations to the students recognized tonight and also to the entire class of 2024. We are so proud to have been a part of your educational journey, and we hope that you continue to do great things. I would also like to congratulate Mrs. Donahue on her well-deserved honor. She is a valued member of the Board of Education, a steadfast advocate for students and for public education. I would also like to congratulate all the retirees, take me with you, including Mr. Anderson and Mr. Evans for their service to the Board of Education. I have also been on that side of the table in another district, and we are certainly grateful for your service. As an aside, I have 2,941 calendar days left until my retirement, in case anybody wants to keep track for me. I'd also like to congratulate our two newest board members, Caitlin Simmons and Candace DeLeo Novak. We look forward to having you bring fresh perspectives to the board. I would also like to welcome Dr. Tracy Norman to the Monroe Woodbury School District as the deputy superintendent and soon-to-be superintendent. Along with other MWTA members, I had the pleasure of meeting with him, and we had a very good conversation, which we look forward to continuing soon. We think the board made an excellent choice for the district, and we look forward to working with him and you more regularly in the future. Change is not always easy for folks, but change can be good when people are willing to work together in partnership for a common purpose. And while change can be scary, we should not be frightened by change, especially when it is needed to restore a sense of community or create balance. At Monroe Woodbury, our common purpose is to educate students, and sometimes we lose sight of that purpose in the midst of the swirl. But I am hoping that we can all try to re-center our energies on them as we enter this next chapter of our shared history. I would be remiss if I did not thank Ms. Hock, Mr. Cahill, and the Business Office for their assistance during negotiations for the MWEA contract, the nurses' contract as they're joining the MWTA, yay, and implementation of the MWTA Benefits Trust. We are very close to finishing two of those three items, and we could not do that without them and without the support of the Board of Education. I did want to briefly speak about item 17.1 on the agenda and urge the Board of Education to reject this proposal. While having a polling place at CB may provide convenience for voters, it will be an inconvenience for my members who have legitimate safety concerns. Election Day is normally a conference day, and while teachers and staff could be displaced to another location, that is not conducive to providing effective professional development, and sending them to an out-of-district conference could also add additional expenses to the school district. Those concerns, by the way, also exist when we hold the budget vote at Central Valley. But for better or for worse, the turnout is much lower and the issues are far less contentious. I hope that everyone has a restful summer, spend some time with family and friends, do something fun for yourself, and to the high school and middle school students, good luck on your finals and region's exams. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Casey Capen regarding classroom temps.
Good evening. I do not know how many days until I retire, so I'm still definitely going to be here quite a while longer than that. But good evening and congratulations to all of those who were recognized tonight for their accomplishments and their contributions to Monroe Woodbury. I'm here tonight to thank the PTA, SEPTA, NICEIT, and all who are advocating for temperature control in the classrooms. Slowly but surely, our voices are being heard, and the bill is working its way through the state, which will hopefully bring us all some much-needed relief. While I would love to stand here and ask that every building immediately have central air conditioning, I will be realistic. I'm here tonight to ask for air conditioning window units be placed back into classrooms where most needed. We have units, if we have units, sitting in basements, storage tunnels, garages, please put them back into classrooms. Let's start with our special education classrooms, regardless of whether or not a child has that on their IEP. Students with autism are extremely sensitive to sensory stimuli, including sound, touch, and temperature. We make accommodations and modifications all day long for that reason. Why would we not accommodate temperature? Some of these students don't have the ability to express verbally or to even recognize the fact that they are overheated, which of course can lead to many other problems and of course interrupt the education of the day. Another area to prioritize are rooms in the buildings throughout our district that are notoriously, that are known for being significantly higher temperatures than others. In the middle school, even with fans blowing, classroom temperatures have been recorded as high as 92 degrees. While having larger areas available for cooling off is appreciated, it does not allow us to consistently deliver instruction. Let's get AC units in these hotter rooms so that kids continue learning and teachers can continue teaching throughout these hotter months. These are quick, temporary fixes for just a small portion of our students and faculty that I hope can be accommodated. I ask you, though, to please start planning for long-term relief in all the classrooms throughout our buildings. Whether it's mandated or not, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, well, we don't have any updates from last meeting because we haven't had any comments. Approval of the minutes, may have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Action items, 13.1 through 13.6. Are there any questions? May have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel? Ms. Hock?
Thank you. I'd like to request approval for the items listed under personnel. I'd also like to point out a recommendation for Mr. Michael Barone, longtime assistant principal, who July 1st will step up. Mike is stepping up as a principal of Central Valley Elementary School.
Are there any questions? May have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Business and financial?
Thank you, Michael. I respectfully request the approval of the business and financial items, 15.1 through 15.7.
Are there any questions? May have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, may have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Up, we're now at 17.1, which is discussion regarding the request to use Central Valley Elementary as a county polling site. I do have a question for Mr. Frank Sambetts. It was shared with me, and I don't know, because I don't know the polling laws in Orange County, that Orange County could actually enforce a site if it's a public building, if they so chose to?
There is a stipulation in New York State election law that it could turn to public buildings and go to the state, and they would then in turn, I believe the way it's written is, you know, basically say you need to do a polling site as a public building, so.
Okay. That was, that was the only question I had. I don't know if anyone else has any other questions before we?
I got a question.
Sure.
I don't know if this is for you or for anyone else that's aware. What issues have happened in the past that we would need to be aware of in our area?
Just in, as far as poll sites?
The poll sites? It seems like there's some concern about, it seems like there's some concern about what could happen, some contentiousness. Obviously, we know about the state of America.
Right. I think, I mean, as a school board member, we had that concern a few years ago. I think after, it was directly after Sandy Hook. There was issues about, you know, people entering the buildings. And most of the districts now use controlled entrance if there's a voting site in that building. Or in Chester, we use a side entrance that's into a music room, so it's not the public entrance going through the whole building. It used to be right in the auditorium, like we would have voting in the auditorium during a regular day, but as those issues that you're talking about, we changed it so that it was just more secure and it wasn't in the flow of students, basically.
And to follow, thank you for that.
Yep.
I love that. So when it comes to that additional secure, is there additional security? And if so, who is it paid by?
Well, that would be on the district, you know, how the district runs their buildings. I mean, most of the districts are usually not students in the building on election day, usually. Some are, some aren't, but, you know, that would just fall on the districts. As far as if there was additional security, in our district, I know we're much smaller than Monroe Woodbury, but they, we just controlled it by having our security officers, and they cordoned off one small section of a passageway that went into the voting area. Thank you.
What are the usual numbers of people that will move through the, through the facility?
It just depends on election day. Earlier when I was talking about voting numbers, general elections are usually like a 50% turnout. On any other elections, it's much smaller, but, so you could, you know, you're looking at maybe a 50% turnout on a GE election.
What's the, what's the, what's the number?
So for town of Woodbury, you're looking around 4,000 could possibly vote, but that's for the whole town. There still would be a poll site at the senior center in the town of Woodbury, and then we would combine the other two into the elementary, much like we do for your school election.
My question is more for the one that you mentioned, the possibility of in June. So can you just repeat what you had said, that no matter what, it would occur and, or if we have school in session, that we could say no?
Yeah, we just had that issue this past, we had a presidential primary in April. Does everyone remember that? It was a quick one, but some of the schools couldn't accommodate us because they weren't used to having it in April, and they, they asked not to hold that election. We would work, the Board of Elections would work with the school districts, like we do across the whole county, on a case-by-case basis, if there are situations where that can't, you know, can't be pulled off, whether it's student issues or what have you.
So the primaries in June, there are two, right? For two primaries?
The primaries in June only will happen when there is a primary between two candidates of the same party. It's cyclical. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. There's a small one this year throughout Orange County. It's a conservative primary, so there's only one polling site in every town, instead of the normal, like, let's say Monroe has five sites, normally four or five sites, town of Monroe. So for this primary, there's only, Town Hall is the only one having the election. And that's, we, the purpose of trying to get a solid spot for the town of Woodbury, like those voters know when they come here for school votes, that's a common place and everyone's used to it. And that's another point of trying to get a stable place, because when we're constantly trying to change polling sites, it confuses the voters and it turn, you know, could turn into a giant disaster on any election day. So that's where we're trying to solid this one in and try to make it accommodating for all the residents of town of Woodbury.
So that would be a permanent location for how many years to come?
Well, it would, they would put it in to be a permanent location, and that would be, you know, discussions with the school going forward. If there's issues that come up, you would work with the commissioners, and they would, you know, work out situations if you don't think that that was viable.
So, so once the commitment is made, the school will be expected to accommodate every year?
Yeah, we basically do that across the whole county right now. We're in pretty much most of the school districts, like the city of Middletown and Newburgh. Newburgh has nine voting sites throughout their schools, and not just for school elections. We use their school buildings for regular town and city elections.
And you said the obligation for security is on the school district?
Well, that, yeah, you could discuss that also with the commissioners, but that would be like a normal operation that's going on in the building?
It's not normal when you have that many extra people there.
Yeah, it obviously, right, depends on the turnout.
Right.
Are there other questions? Okay. So do we have a motion to use the elementary school as a polling site?
Are we voting tonight?
It's just a discussion.
No, just a discussion. Okay.
No vote.
So no vote. Thank you for your time tonight. Up, next up, we have reports by Board of Education committees. All right, let's start with the Policy Committee.
Okay. Thank you. We met on May 31st. We discussed with Howard Miller, the constitutionality of protected prayer in public school, religious expression in public schools, in instructional programs. We also discussed graduation ceremonies, diploma, and credential options for students with disabilities. And I don't think we have another meeting set as of yet.
Okay.
Okay, up to this year, anyway.
Thank you. Visitation?
Get that for him? Sure. So on June 6th, we visited the Harriman Center. And before I begin, just to note that for anyone that hasn't seen the Harriman Center up close and personal, it is an old building, over 100 years old at this point. 1915 is when it was established. There's a lot to be done there. What we usually do for Visitation Committee, we go in, we take a list of everything that's happened that's been new over the last year. Obviously, because of that facility, not a lot's going on. There's not a lot of new things going on. There's a, there's an area that's being used for some Harriman offices. There's the courthouse, where hopefully you guys don't end up there very often. But for the most part, the majority of the building is either empty or it's used for additional storage for all the other buildings. So thank you, Cahill, for taking us through there and kind of explaining to us. We did ask the question of, and I've been asked in the past, like, are we going to use the building for anything? Because I live in the general area. And when asked about whether or not there is going to be any capital that goes into fixing it, he informed us that it would be seven figures just to get it up to code. Just, just getting it up to code would be a considerable investment. So we would really have to think about whether or not it's going to be used for something that we needed for. Last year, there was some damage done by, by some vultures, sorry. So there was some fixing to the roof that needed to be done for the, for that, for about $20,000. Obviously, because we're using the space for a lot of storage, we do want to make sure that the roofs stay intact, because there's a lot of stuff in there that, you know, that we don't want to get damaged. I personally like to go into the buildings and see the boilers. Some of the other people make fun of me, but it's good to see. That, that one is, not good to see, but that one is old, as old as many of the others. But that one is not one of the ones that's going to be fixed by the capital improvement project. So, yeah, that's about it. Unfortunately, there's not a lot going on there to, to note at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. On, I'm going to give the Audit Committee update on 6/6. We, at 5:00 PM, we had an Audit Committee meeting. We went over a number of reports, and we also talked about a focus in the new year with certain audits that would need to be considered. And there were no concerns or findings that were of any note. We actually did really well again. We actually did really well again. Ratings as far as the areas that were looked at, there were 92 separate areas. We actually moved, we have no high, which is excellent, they shared with us. Moderates, we had 18 last time. We have 16 this time. I did ask a question, what moderates could be moved? Because some things will always have an inherent moderate risk level, and will never move because of the risk. So they were going to look at that a little bit deeper, so, because as a, as a committee, we want to have a goal. Like, if they say these 12 items will always be moderate, then maybe we can move another four to low, if possible. And then lows went from 74 to 76. So overall, they said very strong results. Kudos to Patrick and Michael Bothamonte and the team, and the admin team, because these audit results are very strong. That's all I have. Stacy, did you want to do a wrap-up for the superintendent's search, or?
Um, I mean, as everybody saw last week, we were able to appoint our new deputy superintendent, which was Dr. Norman. It was an extensive search that I just want to thank all of the board members. We did put together a task force to get through some of the preliminary information, but then ultimately it was all nine of us that were able to meet with the candidates. I want to thank District Wise for their guidance in getting us to that point, and to the Cabinet and Carol, because they did a lot of work behind the scenes to actually help us and facilitate some of the ins and outs of getting information up on the website, and directing how we can make sure that all the stakeholders had an input, so I want to thank all of those members that helped. And we're, we're thrilled with the decision. So I think it'll be a welcome next month, when he will be here to preside over the meeting, and I think that's it.
Thank you. I do want to thank the Board for all the work that went in, but also the task force. There was a lot of effort that went into reviewing the applicants, working with District Wise, and Mrs. McCleary, Ms. McCleary was very instrumental in coordinating a lot of that as well, so appreciate that. Next up, we have the final report from our Student Board of Education Representative, Mr. Michael Martinez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Martinez, and I'm the 2023-2024 Student Board of Education Representative. I am a senior at Monroe Woodbury High School, and in the fall, I will be standing at Vassar College, majoring in Political Science. This is my last meeting. It is something that will be closing a chapter in my high school career. I applied for this position the night before it was due. I wrote my application about 8:00 PM. My mom read my essay by 9:30. I changed all my grammatical errors that she found by 10 o'clock. I submitted it and was really proud of myself, because I had come back from DC at that moment, and I've only been in this district for about two years, so this was a very big school compared to my really small school. And I was just thrown into this idea of being someone new, being someone that is proud of themselves and the achievements that they had. So I applied for this position trying to showcase what I had. And I am here. It wasn't easy. There was little bumps in the roads, but when I came into that interview, I was, I knew something was going to happen, and I knew I was going to try to showcase who I was. And, well, we're here now. This role, I represent over 5,000 students across the district. Over the past year, I've gotten to speak with so many people. I loved hearing the little stories from the little children. I loved seeing the little, getting to go to their lunch and hearing what was their favorite food, or what did they do at recess. It was just, it brought me back to what school's all about. And that's really the excitement and fun that is learning. It's also about listening. This role is a lot about hearing what others have to say and putting yourself out there to listen, because it's not always the easiest. You might want to say something, but it's better to just listen and hear what someone has to offer. So without that, I think this role comes with a lot of people you need to thank in life. It's about being grateful for the people that you have, and so I have a few I want to thank tonight. First, I want to congratulate Ms. Rodriguez on your retirement. I am sadly not retiring from school. I have a few more years to go. Your dedication and love for, for this school are qualities that I always will admire. I hope our new superintendent will be able to continue doing all that we can to promote the success of the students that you've showcased. I hope this board and the audience can remember why we are all here today, the students. We cannot have this whole educational progress and system be just about a single grade. We are people, and we should be recognized for our, for our qualities and success. That is what education is about. Secondly, a person you probably have all seen very commonly is my mom. The one who eats dinner with me later after these meetings, the one who asks, I ask if my tie is okay. The one who reads my speeches and definitely tells me the vast amounts of spelling mistakes I have. The one who has shown up no matter what. I didn't just be, I, it didn't just begin with this role. She's always been there for me, whether it was the vast amount of internships that were unpaid. She would pick me up at 5:00 just after work. She told me things weren't going to be easy. She works three jobs. She is an occupational therapist at an elementary school and a professor at two colleges. And she's shown me what hard work is, and showing up for the people that you love. She's been there nonstop for me, and I don't think I would be here today without her. She's been one that has been kind of my ride or die, and showed up for me no matter what. This role, she told me to kind of go the extra mile. It's not going to be easy. It's not going to be the most fun it sometimes, but it's worth it in the end. And I try my best. I did everything I could, and I hope I set an example for future Board of Ed representatives to follow in my footsteps. My mom's mom, or my grandmother, which I call my Nana, passed away last month, and she's not in the audience tonight. And I know she's not here right now, but I know she's watching up from above, proud of us all. So I know I love you is not enough, but I love you, Mom, and thank you. Third, I would like to actually say congratulations to the class of 2024. As a student of this class, it feels unreal to say graduation is less than two weeks away. 12 years of my life has been dedicated to education. It is this, now it's down to this moment. I have a little advice for these, for these graduates and the students that will follow in our footsteps. You don't have to know it all. You don't have to have your whole life planned out. Rather, do what you love, find your passions, be who you want to be. Don't live life always looking at a clock. Be present. Tell the ones you, the ones most important in your life that you love them. Go on adventures, try new things. Don't live life with regrets. Go for it. Be the opposite. Be the trailblazer, the trendsetter. Don't be scared of the future. You decide what your fate will be. In a school of almost over 2,000 students, I was just one of them. I came into the school as a transfer student my sophomore year, and then I left my junior year for half, half the year as in the DC program. I came back, and I felt like it was a new start again, and felt like I had to start all over with many people I met. I'm an introvert at heart. I'm not the big social butterfly everyone likes to think I am. I could talk, but not the best. But this year was different. I felt like I was at home. I got to experience what actually being a senior is like. I, I made memories, tried new things. I had a reason to hold my head up high. I had one really key person in my life that was allowing me to have the senior year that I deserved. The one that I didn't stress every second of my life, worrying about what my grade was. I actually got to experience some fun and excitement in my life. I was able to see that I can actually have people in my life that I can count on, and I, in school, and meet new people, and see what life's actually about. She stayed with me through thick and thin. She was the person I was missing in my heart. One that, no matter what, was always by my side. Love is not about how many days, months, or years you've been together. Love is about how much you love each other every single day. Let us be grateful to the people who make us happy. They are the charming, charming gardeners who make us, our souls blossom. Sitting in this chair, I look around, and I got a seat at the table. I'm the only one. I'm, I'm the chance to be a voice for the voiceless. This place may not have been my home where I went to elementary school, or where I grew up in middle school, but it feels like home. So I thank you all for letting me, let, let me call this place home. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Michael. You made Elsie cry. It's going to be that way the rest of the night, I'm sure. Reports by Board and Central Office. We'll start with Sergey.
I wanted to congratulate all the recipients of awards today. It is pretty amazing to see how many different programs the school district runs, and how many kids participate in these extracurricular activities. I wanted to thank the teachers and administration for another solid year. And I wanted to wish everybody a happy summer.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate all the award recipients and express my gratitude for the award I received tonight. My entire adult life has been devoted to education, and this recognition means everything to me, so thank you all very, very much. I'd also like to wish all the students good luck on their upcoming Regents exams. And Michael, you will be so missed. I can't even begin to tell you how much. You've been wonderful, a wonderful asset to this board, and I wish you good luck in all your future endeavors.
Thank you.
I've also had the pleasure of attending a lot of our end-of-year activities, and they're so much fun. I went to Smith's Cove the other day to, to watch the kids at their field day. It was, it was amazing. They're, they're just great. I'm looking forward to graduation, and I would like to congratulate the class of 2024 and their families. Well done. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you to the staff and faculty for all your hard work and another successful year as we get close to the finish line. Of course, congratulations to all of our wonderful students. Michael, good luck in all your future endeavors. I don't think you'll need the luck, because you do the hard work, but you're welcome to have that as well. I'd like to thank the task force that was mentioned before, especially Stacy, who really took the bull by the horns and got us across the finish line with that. And of course, thank you to some teammates, Anthony and Jamel. We will greatly miss you. Thanks, sir.
Good evening. Sorry, this is going to be a rough one. While Elsie still has until the end of August in district, this evening's meeting is the last that she will provide, preside over as superintendent. The Board would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Elsie and her years of dedicated leadership to our school district. You have led Monroe Woodbury through years of ups and downs, never backing down from a challenge. And let's be honest, one of those challenges has been dealing with us as board members over the years. We thank you for always keeping the mission of educating the students of Monroe Woodbury in the forefront of each and every decision that you've made. We wish you a wonderful retirement, and please know that you will be missed. On a personal note, I've had the pleasure of working with you for the last eight years. You have managed to inspire so many, whether it be faculty, staff, community members, and most importantly, our students. I have witnessed you break down barriers and connect with stakeholders by listening, treating people respectfully, and with fairness. In return, you have garnered the respect of many and will be greatly missed. Your legacy will remain in Monroe Woodbury. Thank you.
I would just like to say congratulations to the class of 2024. We did it, and good night, everyone.
Congratulations to the class of 2024.
Margaret?
Congratulations tonight to all the students for amazing, amazing ceremony. Mrs. Donahue, thank you for all your services, and well, congratulations, we'll deserve an award. And we'll definitely, Michael, we'll miss your contagious smile.
Thank you.
As always, and you're not introvert. It's a busy time of the school year, a lot of ceremonies around in every building. I attended a few Top 25, really, really great organization. Academic Award Night was amazing. Last night, War City Classic was great. So take advantage of the events. These are feel-good bucket-filling events for all of us. And Elsie, you are still with us, so I'm not going to say anything. Two more months, we'll not let you go that easy. On a different note, on a more business note, last about 10 years, we are using a solution called Swift K12. This is a communication tool that we've been using for a while. Last month, we got a notification that the company is getting out of business of supporting education clients. So, so quickly, we put the team together comprised of the folks who really use on a day-to-day basis this tool, some of the support staff, administrator, and technology team member. We evaluated three different solutions and decided to go ahead with a tool called School Messenger. The reason I'm sharing this with you is more to come, but this is more what's coming down the pike. The new solution we, we decided was School Messenger. It is a little bit different than the current one in the function of text message. So staff and parents needs to opt in to the text message. More to come during the summertime. This is just a heads up that, that it's coming down the pike. It is a really good solution. Many school districts around us have been using it. We already have set up and configured and ready to go the solution. There will be overlap of a couple of months over the summer while we provide the training to our support staff and administrators. Again, more information to come in the summer and, and before the beginning of the school year. Thank you.
First, I want to say we could have used some tissues down this end as well. Secondly, I want to say kudos to Michael's mom. He raised an amazing young man. Third thing I want to say is, one of the most rewarding aspects of my job in human resources is to be able to see our graduates come back, enter the field of education, and to be in a position where I can offer them, on behalf of the district, a job teaching our students. We have one of those individuals in our audience tonight, and that's Samantha Trimblett. Samantha graduated from here, I think, 2017, if I'm correct. I was, I'm old. And it, it's just so rewarding when we see our young people come back and are now on the other side and, and teaching our, our, our current students. So Samantha, welcome back, and we wish you a wonderful career.
So I, I too want to congratulate everybody that was recognized tonight. You know, a, a shout-out to the amazing accomplishments of all of our kids. Also, just a, a quick congratulations and thank you to all the coaches, advisors, staff, families behind everybody that was recognized tonight, because, you know, it, it truly takes, it, it takes a team effort in order to be able to support kids in the many, many different facets for them to, to thrive and to, you know, achieve all of their accomplishments. So, so thank you very much to everybody involved. Best wishes to Mr. Evans and to Mr. Anderson. Michael, I, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Vassar Political Science, that is super, super exciting. I mean, we're talking about polling places. Who knows? We may, we may be entering a polling place and seeing your name in there one day. So I wish you all the best. Good luck. This is an amazing time of the school year. I mean, similar to everybody else, like, I can't list all of the things that I've been at. It, it's just awesome to see the, the amazing work of our students. And I, I can't tell you how excited I am. This is a very, very special class of graduates that we have this year, and I am so eager to see them, you know, graduate, move on, and continue to crush it. It is a great, great group of kids. So be well and have a great summer.
I, I really have very little. Congrats, congrats to all, congrats. Congratulations to all who were recognized tonight. Incredibly impressive. Congratulations to all our retirees. Anthony, Jamel, thank you for your, your service. Michael, I agree. You already have my vote, so regardless of what polling station you're in, or even what your ideas are, we'll just go over here anyway. The, I haven't eaten dinner yet, but the, the refreshments put out by Lynn Prestea and the food service staff in the cafeteria, thank you for those in between. The cookies are, are amazing. Before you know it, we'll be at new teacher orientation in the middle of August. I know, nobody really wants to think about that yet, but it's, it's coming. We're prepping, we're planning, and it's true.
We're prepping, we're planning, and it's true. I have two favorite days of the year for different reasons. One is the first day of the school year, and the second one is graduation. Both bring equal amounts of excitement and, but graduation is amazing. So, the fact that we're going to be standing on that stage in just, you know, a week and a half or two weeks at this point is really incredible. Graduations, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
So, I'd like to echo what others have said, especially the congratulations to the class of 2024. I'd like to thank Michael for his outstanding service on the Board as student representative. Good luck next year at college. I'd like to thank Mr. Evans and Mr. Anderson for their Board service. It was, it was a pleasure working with you. I'd also like to thank Sapphire PTA for a donation that was on the agenda tonight of playground equipment. It was about $13,000 value. So, there's a lot of effort and work that went into getting that, so big thank you to them. And with that, I think, I hope everyone has a nice evening. Thank you.
First, definitely want to say congratulations to Elsie on your retirement. I feel like retirement, and people saying I'm retiring from the Board, that's not really retirement. Yours is retirement. That's the retirement, that's like, in my mind, the new American dream.
It is.
Being able to retire.
It is a dream.
It is a dream. It's a dream that you made a reality. You put in all, you earned your retirement. So, thank you for the work that you put in there. And also, I'll note, Michael, I can't, I mean, I can't follow what everyone said. It's been incredible to see you work and to see, you know, you set the bar for the next people that are going to have your position. So, thank you for being you, and thank you to your family for everything that they've done for you. Anthony's not here, but I want to say thank you from him to the community for his nine years of service. I just prepared something. I promise it's going to be less than four minutes because I feel like if it's more than four minutes, it wouldn't be fair to all the people that we've had up here and we ding the bell for. So, I'm going to keep it very, very controlled here. So, good evening, everyone. As I prepare to step down from my role as VP of Monroe Woodbury's Board of Education, I want to share a few reflections and insights that I hope will guide and inspire future Board members, our new superintendent, and our community. First, it's crucial to remember that our trustees are here to serve our children and the Monroe Woodbury community, not their own self-interests. While the vast majority of us wholeheartedly adhere to that, we as voters and taxpayers need to make sure that that's a continued belief, that's a continued belief and that we hold people accountable to, something that we hold people accountable to while they sit in their seats. Sorry, it's a lot of reading. I caution the community to only elect individuals who have the abilities we need and can contribute in a way that will genuinely benefit the district. Fortunately, I believe the community has made wise choices with our newest additions, and I look forward to them lending their professional and personal talents in our efforts to prioritizing our children's needs. Second, before joining the Board, I was told by many that we had issues, transparency, accountability issues in the district, and regrettably, that it can be true in some circumstances. We now have an incoming superintendent who I believe is ready to tackle and improve Monroe Woodbury in these aspects, among others. I would ask the community to give him time and grace as he assesses our district to see which areas should get his initial focus and what the plan should be for the ones that may fall into secondary or tertiary focus buckets. And to summarize that, give him an honest chance. If we can, if he can deliver in the ways we previously discussed with him, I believe Monroe Woodbury will be a better place in the coming years. Third, during our initial Board training, we're taught that it's not up to the Board to run the district, but it is our duty to make sure it's being run well. The Board cannot fulfill this role unless we receive the proper information from the administration, faculty, the students, and the community. To the staff of Monroe Woodbury, please know your voices should never fall on deaf ears. If that has been the case, I apologize, and you deserve better. Like I mentioned, when it comes to transparency and accountability, there's more work to be done. Within just this one term as a Board member, I was able to be a part of amazing opportunities that I'll take with me forever. I created a scholarship for our students and donated $20,000 in total to eight deserving seniors, as well shook the hands of hundreds of deserving students and staff while giving them well-deserved awards. I was voted VP twice and was the right hand to someone whose integrity and leadership qualities have been invaluable. I was able to do my part in choosing our next superintendent. I even met the President of the United States due to the trust that a Board member had in me. Thank you, Jeff. But none of that touches the pride in knowing I was able to get back to the school district that had given me so much since I was 11 years old. So, finally, I'll close out with a quick and very direct message to our community as a whole. If you don't use your voice, someone else will leverage your silence. So, do your part and vote. Thank you.
So, I want to begin by saying to Mrs. Blumer, you are an awesome mom. I want to, someone texted me, and this is what they said. I was watching with my son, and I told him, you see, see how he thanked his mom? So, you are now a model for other young children. You are amazing. So, let's give him another round of applause. I wish Jamelle and Anthony well. Thank you for your service. Thank you for the flowers. Looking forward, I know it doesn't seem like this, but I'm truly looking forward to retirement.
She just doesn't want the meeting to end, though.
No, I do. I'm tired. I just want to say thank you, and it's been a really good run. Thank you.
Thank you.
On this night, I know it's been said by pretty much everybody else around the table, but I will reiterate, congratulations to all the award recipients. It's always a great evening to see them get those awards. To the class of 2024, congratulations to all of our retirees, including the one next to me. Michael, thank you for your professionalism and advocacy on behalf of our students. You have truly set the bar high for the next individual. I do know Dylan, so I'm looking forward to working with him as well. Jamelle and Anthony, Anthony was the senior person on the Board, and Jamelle, you've been side by side the whole time, you know, VP, did a great job. Your leadership has been invaluable, your support, and Anthony's guidance and sage wisdom always was really beneficial to the group as a whole during discussions. And with Elsie, I just want to say, brief and simple, be safe and enjoy your newfound freedom because that's what it will be.
Thank you.
With that, I-
Hold on one second. We have one person we didn't recognize, Noreen.
Thank you, Elsie.
Noreen has been with us for how many years?
18.
22 years. She's like the person, the person who runs this, this meeting. And so, I want to say congratulations. This will be her last meeting, so let's give her a round of applause.
And with that, we move to adjournment. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.